Keep it to that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, my name is Matthew Ghost. Um, I'm a resident of Newcastle, uh, not Glinwood Springs.
Okay.
That's it. Okay. Um, hi, everybody. I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate everything we love about our region. Uh, and to quote the Glinwood Springs Travel Guide, it's not your average mountain town. Uh, Glinwood is a famous place around the world for its water and is home to the confluence of the Roaring Fork and Colorado rivers as well as the beautiful Hanging Lake. Uh, and with the hanging lake and the mountain wastes up there, we being popular with tourists should take steps to actively protect it. Uh, waters that flow through our town go on to provide clean drinking water for the entire southwest United States as well as northern Mexico. It percolates beneath our mountain peaks, filling our hot springs, the middle rich waters and come up, people come up from across the globe to for rehabilitation and relaxation. Like Hanging Lake, it's time to take steps to actively protect it. Um, the UNTA Basin Railway proposal is one that I know every member of our community has concerns for. If approved, our daily industrial train traffic could triple. These trains could carry oil, not passengers, and Utah's UNTA Basin refineries of the Gulf Coast is where their destination is going. Uh, and it's destined for global markets. With the average of seventeen hundred train derailments per year in the United States, it's nearly inevitable that an oil train derailment would happen over our lifetime. Uh, their own estimates say that this could happen annually, most likely in the Glenwood Canyon spilling into our Colorado River. This would cause devastating, uh, economic harm, um, to our tourism economy as well as our recreational outlets out here. Um, Colorado Rising and their allied associations to stop UVR Coalition, including my organization, Three Fifty Colorado, um, have planned an important rally, offering the opportunity for Glinwood Springs and other mountain community members to come together to voice their opposition to this dangerous plan. Both local and national outdoor retailers, professional rafting companies and outdoor enthusiasts from across our state will come together on August twenty sixth to fight, uh, to save our precious Colorado River from the proposed UNTA Basin Railway. Elected leaders, including both of our senators, Michael Bennett and John Hickel Looper, Congressman Joe Negus and Jason Crow, Congresswoman Brittany Peterson and Diana De- Dejette, uh, and Colorado's Attorney General Phil Weiser have spoken out publicly with strong oppositions towards this railway. This hybrid float march rally event for the river, uh, will be a day to celebrate everything we love about Glinwood Springs and the river we use it every day for. Um, from playing in the water to, uh, sorry, um. Restaurants, cafes, breweries and attracts other attractions will be present. Uh, many local businesses have already united with us, and I ask tonight that the council does the same. Coming together to raise concerns for our mountaintop, from the mountaintop, for a single unified voice is the only way that will be heard by decision makers in Washington DC. Uh, tonight I ask you to add your voices clearly to the opposition at this disastrous plan and would be honored to have your support for the important event. Please join us on votes or bring your own. Uh, it would be a privilege to elevate your voices alongside other state and national speakers at the rally following the floats, Colorado Press.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you. You did great. Thank you so much and and definitely worthy cause. We are huge. We, we actually align quite well with your cause and we would love it if you guys wanted to send an invite to our council. We would like to see if we can send a representative.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you so much. Lori Chase.
Hello, I'm Lori Chase, seven oh five Cowden Drive. And I will not go over my two minutes or three minutes. Anyway, I don't think so. This is, uh, in relation to Habitat's project on Cowden. And I, I have a few pros and cons here. Pro is that that he cleans up the vacant lot, which that's really nice. And it, another pro is it provides affordable, truly affordable workforce housing. And we really appreciate that here. Con is too many units, not enough parking. We need to change that to six units, two cars per unit and four guest spaces. We already have too many parking issues as was discussed earlier in the work session. Um, so that's our main thing is we'd like that changed to six units and two cars per s- per unit. Another con is a really big one for me is the ingress and egress from that entire neighborhood. So as you all know, that street Cowden goes down the street, makes the corner into Overland, Overland Drive, comes back around and enters Midland at a rather odd angle, making it very difficult to for people to get in and out. And Cowden Drive has also similar issues with sightline and entry or exiting that street, making it very dangerous at times, especially since people like to speed a lot through there because they're in a hurry to go shopping or go home. So anyway, and then I'd like to please ask you all to please look to the future of the traffic impacts that will come from the building down valley and they're all going to be using either Grand Avenue or Midland to get in and go up to their jobs at Valley. This is a car centric society. It's really hard to get a pod carrier to bring his tools on the bus. So naturally people are going to keep on using their cars unless we can find another way to mitigate that. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lori. Hey, and I, I just want, I'm not going to address all of your items, but I will let you know that it's my understanding that Habitat is very receptive and open to some community and neighborhood discussions. So I would encourage you to bring those items up with them as well. Okay? Oh, yeah.
I did have a discussion.
In future, in future, they want to do.
She never, just so you know, she said, I'll send you out. I asked her to put it in writing and everything and she never did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, perfect. Um, with that, I, are there any additional people here for public comment or anyone online? Any hands up if you're, if you're online and you'd like to take your three minutes, you're more than welcome to raise your hand and we'll give that to you. Okay, then I will close public comment. Bring it back to council and look for a motion to approve the consent agenda, less item D. Hold on one second. I'm going to put your mic on.
I'll, I'll move it.
Okay, and then somebody, okay, and then so we have a motion by councillor Otis and a second by councillor Calp. All those in favor? Um, any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on. We are going to start up then with item D from the consent agenda, which is resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one, which is prorated outdoor dining leasing fee. Do we have anybody from staff?
Uh, Emery Ellingson, Community Development, um, for resolution two thousand twenty-three thirty-one, prorated outdoor dining leasing fee. Uh, so just to give council a summary, uh, city leases in the downtown area, outdoor dining space, restaurants lease, public right of way for outdoor dining. Um, now that can either be on sidewalk, which is the majority of the leases, or there are some examples of where on-street parking spaces have been leased out. Now, when a business owner leases and parking space in the street obviously cannot be used during the winter months. So those owners have, even though they technically lease and pay for a full year of a lease, they pull all their outdoor dining stuff during the winter so streets can clean it. Um, so at the request of those leases, uh, we have put this together to consider prorating their fees so that they're paying for the period of time during the year and they can actually use it. And so that's what this resolution, um, is asking for. And I would like to note that in the staff report, there is an error. Uh, the lease rate, which is standard a dollar seventy-five per square foot, would actually be a dollar three per square foot and not seventy-two. And so it would result in different amounts being charged for those leases if this were approved.
Okay, um, I'm going to bring it back to council for questions, not comments, but questions. Um, councillor Zalinski.
Thank you. I was curious about that lease, um, the dollar amount quoted, is that a monthly and annual? Is that, what's the term of that?
So it's an annual lease and then the rate is per square foot. So if you have three hundred square feet times a dollar seventy-five, that would be your annual lease fee. And then there is a seventy-five dollar administrative fee. So that would be the total cost to the business owner for leasing.
Any other council questions? Okay, any council comments? Councillor Zalinski.
So this caught my attention, um, mainly because we're having this conversation about parking downtown and, and you know what a premium is at and I've had several businesses in that vicinity question why we're even still taking parking for outside dining. Um, it's post-COVID. Not every restaurant in Glinwood has outside dining. It's a lovely amenity, but when we look at how much you pay to give up a parking place, it's not even commensurate with the fee that we're charging for that lease. And so I am not comfortable with even reducing that rate further. I don't feel like it's in the best interest of the community. It's not equitable.
Councillor Calp.
And I guess I, I think you, that raises a valid point. I'm not sure how much analysis has been done to kind of evaluate that. And, um, so I would be interested in having that discussion is what's the trade-off? For allowing those restaurants to have more outdoor seating, which I think is an amenity to their guests, but also our visitors to town to be able to have more outdoor seating and, um, and frankly, I enjoy seeing it on the street. You know, it's a use, it's a public use of the street that I think is is worthwhile and it livens up the, the streetscape a little bit. So I'm not against it. But I guess in, in respect to your question, what's the payback on it and is there an equity issue there? I don't know. I was just gonna, um, you know, as far as pulling this off, the resolution that came with this item tonight is not affected by the memo and the change in the, the rate, you know, that Emery just stated. So we could pass the resolution of councils in agreement tonight. And I think we can still adjust the rate if we need to at a later date.
Yeah, I think that rates are typically probably an annual. I mean, there would be a renewal from next year. I think is where we're at.
Well, they're, they're not on, every business has, so they're on a rolling basis. So if you adjusted the fee schedule, say for twenty twenty-four, then that would apply as all those rolled up for renewal in twenty twenty-four, if you change the, the fee schedule.
Okay, so I guess it sounds like you are interested in larger conversation of the benefits versus the costs. I am, I am.
And obviously, um, if you took no action on this particular item, things would stay the way they are. Um, moving into, you know, the budget discussion and, and, you know, fee discussion this fall and in the next several meetings. So that's certainly an option you have as well.
Thank you. Um, councillor Otis.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to Aaron's point, you know, it's, it's challenging because when I think if these businesses didn't enter their leases with three, four hundred square feet of outdoor space associated with their property where other spaces on Seventh Street, under the bridge do, and their probably lease rate is reflective of that and at least they paid their landlord. And I, I would, I would suggest, and I don't know this, I mean, this hypothetical, but that if Rocky Mountain Pizza or Masala Curry had a street where they were able to do outdoor dining, they would be paying three, five hundred dollars more every month the landlord for the use of that, um, because it has that amenity as part of that building. So I feel like we're, we're potentially the taxpayers are subsidizing, um, this very heavily. I think it should be much greater, uh, cost than this because it's for Rocky Mountain Pizza almost probably doubles the amount of seating they're able to have eight months a year. And so I think to that regard, uh, I think it's a larger conversation, as we've said, about whether we need that parking in the downtown core more than we need reward to businesses with essentially dollars a month of, of subsidy. Um, I, I like it. I like the ability for them to have that, but it does come at a cost to parking. And I don't think it's at all reflective of the benefit those businesses receive. So I, I would like for us to not take any action for that, uh, cost to maintain the same and then have a larger conversation about if we want to allow that, uh, use at all.
Thank you for that. Um, councillor Shaktar.
I would just concur with councillor Otis and I think what, um, councillor Zalinski said, this is not the time, if there's that question, don't do anything at this point and evaluate it later.
Okay, um, so with that in mind, I'm, I'm just gonna see if there's a general consensus without needing to vote and to change. What if we were to ask the city manager to put it on a future work session agenda and leave it as it is right now? Go ahead, councillor Calp.
I like that suggestion, but I guess if, if we're going to do that, we're going to have a broader conversation. I would love to have staff's opinion on what are the benefits, what are the costs and the impacts? And I, I, I know this came during COVID and we really wanted to expand the outdoor seating. Is it appropriate to keep it going? At this, I'd like to hear their recommendations.
And that would be included in the work session?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Um, councillor Otis, did you have something else?
One more request.
Go ahead.
During that work session, if we could get a recommendation from the DDA on this, that would be helpful for my decision making.
Okay, um, councillor Wymer.
I'll, my only addition would be examples of other municipalities that, that have found some equitable trade-off between the parking space and the.
Absolutely. That's fair. Um, councillor Zalinski.
Yeah, I think that was, I don't want to put you in the hot seat because I'm sure you've probably had conversations with these businesses, which is why you brought this to our attention. It, it just was highlighted to me earlier in the summer and then when I saw this on the agenda, it just brought up that we probably, this does deserve a little bit more of a deep dive into, you know, the, the issue as a whole.
Okay, great. Um, so with that in mind, we are going to, on resolution twenty twenty-three dash three one, we're gonna not do anything right now. We're gonna move it forward to a future work session. And we appreciate, um, you guys bringing back all those suggestions incorporated into the dialogue. Thank you. Okay, great. Um, we will move on to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, quarter two budget amendment, first reading.
Good evening, council. I'm Steve Boyd. Every year, um, after we pass a budget, there are things that come up that we didn't know about when the budget was passed or things that you've asked us to do. We amend the budget four times a year on a quarterly basis to put those things in the budget. So forecasts of fund balances and that kind of thing are more accurate. So that's what this is. Happy to take any questions anyone's got.
Are there any questions for Steve? Hmm, then I'll look for a motion. Oh, it's on. We just, we need to open it to public comment then, right?
Yes.
Okay, any public comment regarding the first reading of this amendment? Or the one reading, it's not even first reading, it's just for, it's just one reading. Anyone online? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. For motion, councillor Otis.
I move, we approve ordinance twenty-three, two twenty, or twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, uh, admitting the second quarter budget.
Councillor Zalinski.
I second.
Do you want to go ahead and call the question? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Wendy. Okay, we're gonna move on to item number eleven, election action on charter amendments. I'm gonna let our legal counsel jump in on this.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Uh, earlier today, we had a work session on this, um, which stemmed out of council a couple of meetings ago, asked that we take a look at two potential charter, uh, amendments to be placed on the November ballot. The first was, uh, whether or not the election date for Glinwood Springs should be moved from odd years in April to even years in November to coincide with the, um, I feel like I'm, is there something on my face?
No, no, no.
No, you're doing great.
Thanks.
It's a current mayor forum, mayor discussion.
Okay, I, I just wanted to be sure, like, there wasn't something for the group. Um, anyway, uh, moving, moving the election date and then also the potential of, of having an, an elected mayor instead of appointed. Um, the longstanding tradition since, well, not the tradition, but the charter in, in Glinwood Springs, with regard to the mayor, charter was adopted in nineteen sixty-five. Uh, the mayor has been a position that is selected from within the council. Uh, council is elected from five wards to at large. Uh, the mayor is selected to run the meetings, be a figurehead. Um, and, you know, ribbon cuttings, those kinds of things. Um, but primarily the function of the mayor is to, is to run the meetings and keep you all in line. Um, but anyway, moving that, uh, to an elected mayor. Um, so during the work session this afternoon, we had a, a really, I think, a very thoughtful discussion about those two items. And I think what came out of that was council felt like now wasn't necessarily the right time to push those forward onto a ballot. Um, that really focusing on, you know, one of the concerns is low voter turnout in our April elections. But the upside to the April elections is that it's just about our community. And so really focusing on how do we increase voter engagement and turnout for those April elections as being the, the, the right move on that question in this moment. And then with regard to the elected mayors, really that it's maybe not the time to, to have that discussion before we have a kind of broader input from the community uh, as well as we're not necessarily on a rush timeline or we have to do that right away. Um, and just part of a broader discussion. So with that in mind, I think at this point, um, council had um, council had, uh, decided that, or not really decided in the work session, but the consensus that I heard in the work session was just not to move either of these two items forward at this time. And so if that is in fact the consensus of council tonight, I think you, much like the last resolution, you still need to take any action on it. Um, and we will, um, give some thought to how we can, um, start. I know that councillor Zalinski, um, volunteered herself to be in charge of the voter turnout and engagement on behalf of the city, uh, but no, in all seriousness, um, to really focus on that and, and wait on these other issues for now. Thanks.
Thank you. That was a really well done. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, with that in mind, we did have a discussion earlier. Is there any, anybody want to add anything or are we gonna just move on with, with Carl's direction? Nor Carl's reference. So, thank you. Okay, great. Then we are gonna move on, um, the page. We are moving on to item twelve. It is officially time to discuss the two C workforce housing fund advisory board appointments. This is the board that will help council decide how to allocate the funds from our two C money. I don't know who's presenting.
So, uh, yeah, staff doesn't have a presentation for this, uh, um, councillor Shaktar and councillor Calp have some recommendations from the interviews that they conducted. And you have the staff report in front of you for, um, appointing the seven-member board. You have the ability to appoint two members outside of the city of Glinwood Springs as well. So there are some decisions and I'll let, uh, councillor Shaktar and councillor Calp discuss their recommendations and staff will be here for any questions afterwards.
We'll move to councillor Shaktar.
Thank you. Um, the interviews were held. Thanks to Hannah. You may have had a chance to review them. Shelley and I then met. Um, we discussed one issue with the mayor and we've come up with the following recommendations, bearing in mind that two of the candidates can be out of the city limits. Um, we had three applicants who are out of the city limits. Um, and also underlying this was a goal to do whatever we can to expand participation from the community. So we've come up, um, with the list there applicants be recommended. Um, would be Carolyn Mettacraft, Genesis Ramos, Brianda Cervantes, Catherine Grosscup, Matt Spidel, Mark Gould and Ben West. Um, and you see some other explanation, uh, regarding, um, contingent on a guarantee or at least a spoken pledge to show up either, did either, um, remotely or in presence, particularly in one candidate where there's a large time demand. Um, I'll say specifically about Ellen Dole. She wanted to be on two C and she was a huge participant in the whole process. Our feeling was that in order to expand representation, um, to not invite her, but gently chat with her and saying her leadership role on housing is huge. Even though she said she'd try both, in order to expand participation and include more people, we'll ask Ellen, please stay on housing. Um, greatly appreciative of her leadership and she will be a great bridge between the two commissions. Um, we had another willing, um, participant, Katie. Um, Narvaz, she is willing to serve. She has not served on commissions. Um, and she also has tremendous expertise in childcare and early childhood. So we thought it would be great, it's not our role, but it would be Hannah's role perhaps, or both of us to encourage her, thank her and encourage her to apply for housing commission because there will be vacancies probably there and, um, and then, uh, Matt would be the move to two C from housing, um, due to his willingness, small business owner and his ever never-ending enthusiasm. So those are our recommendations to council.
Councillor Calp.
I'd just like to add that, um, I agree with everything that Sumner just said. As far as Ellen, we really appreciate her willingness to serve on both, but again, being able to expand it to um, possibly some new participation and Ellen's strength in understanding also the role of, um, code changes and updates and that impact, we felt like her strength on the housing commission is really needed there and we'd love to see her continue in that role. So as far as, um, Katie, if she is willing to look at serving on the housing commission, we thought that would be a, a good spot for her and knowing and wanting to work with staff on possibly expanding some of that uh, conversation on the housing commissioner, even looking at uh, maybe a subcommittee at some point that does look at the intersection of housing and childcare. Because they're both at crisis level in the community, they're somewhat interrelated and so, um, having her expertise on there might be helpful too. Great. I'm really thankful for all of the applicants. Uh, we have a great group. It's a very nice diverse group that will be, um, taking over the two C board fund and look forward to working with them.
Councillor Otis.
Uh, I have a question. Is Ellen's saying or, or intimating that if she gets on to the two C that she will get off of housing?
Her initial reaction, because it was said she would try to straddle both initially.
Okay, so she, if, if she was appointed, she would be on both commissions.
If she were appointed, she would be on both.
Gotcha. A- and so I guess like to, to that point, um, you know, I'm reading through Ellen's, uh, personal and professional interests and she was a HUD attorney, housing and urban development for thirty-seven years when the HUD distinguished service award has a master's in city planning from MIT. I, I just cannot imagine not appointing her to this. Um, I think that, uh, Carolyn Mettacraft is, you know, she works currently with, um, CHAF, she served on the CHAF of, uh, Colorado Housing Finance Authority Board. Uh, she works currently with, um, uh, Habitat for Humanity. And, you know, I, I, Mr. Gould has been fantastic, uh, in his help for two C, but i- in his answers to the questions, I don't think he said more than five words where everybody else had, you know, a paragraph or two about their interests and their background and experience. And if we're looking for people who are, you know, attorneys, land use planners and in her case MIT graduates, I just, I think her, uh, expertise on this would be completely invaluable. And so I would strongly support adding her on and, uh, Carolyn Mettacraft.
Councillor Shaktar.
Um, in all due respect, councillor Otis, we have considered this and I, and I would still, I don't, I'll let councillor Calp disagree in, in, in a couple of points. Number one, we are looking for diversity and expansion of participation. Um, and ironically, not ironically, to when, when we had Catherine Grosscup apply, the credentials are not identical to Ellen's, but there's a ton of overlap in terms of CHAF, HUD um, planning experience. So we thought if we can retain them both, one in housing and one in two C, we, we gain a lot. And in the case of, um, Mr. Gould, we queried him about his passion to attend. There was no question. And again, in terms of diversity, we've got a large business owner, a small business owner and his um, ability to leverage participation and possible financing, we thought would also be a huge contribution. So again, that's why we tried to include every applicant in one role or another, and that's the basis for our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council or any comments or I'll look for a motion? Thank you. Do we have any other questions from council or any comments or I'll look for a motion? Councillor Cowp.
I would move that we I will move that we accept the recommendations uh, presented therein for the for the um, filling of the 2C fund board.
Could you list those names off for the record, please?
Okay, the names are, um, the applicants recommended are Carolyn Metacraft, Genesis Ramos, Brianda Cervantes, Catherine Grosscup, Matt Spidel, Mark Gould and Ben West.
Councillor Zelinski.
I second that motion.
Let's go ahead and and vote. Councillor Schacter, yes. Councillor Cowp, yes. Councillor Wymer, yes. Councillor Gottes, no. Mayor Wusso, yes. Councillor Zelinski, yes. Motion passes. Five, one. Thank you so much. Um, and thank you all to those who applied and we look forward to the work that's done and the commitment and dedication of this group. Thanks so much for those who've already kind of started the process. And now I look forward to seeing what we accomplish. I'm gonna pass it over to councillor Schacter for a moment.
Um, just a question perhaps of Hannah or the mayor. How do we, how do we communicate the recommendations for those who were not um, selected, but were asking to fill roles?
Um, we can communicate that to them and Sarah actually is usually the one communicating appointments to our various commissions. So I'll work with her to make sure I get the wording correct. And also pass along um, some of your reasoning and recommendation to other positions for Ellen and Kate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And before you leave the podium, I have a question regarding the formation of this group. I'm curious if we need to give them a little structure, some guidance, even maybe a little funding to pull in a consultant, just to help them structure it, like kind of best foot forward.
Sure. So next steps for this group, um, obviously we need to get a scheduled meeting on the books. So that's going to be a fun task as they were um, lots of different obligations in their lives. So staff is going to work with them to get the reoccurring meeting. And when that's going to take place and hopefully we'll be able to start that fairly soon. And then to your point, um, I do agree, uh, they have some big tasks ahead of them and bringing back to you a housing plan for your approval on what this funding is going to be used for. Um, and so we are toying with the idea of a consultant to get that started to help them basically get very similar to West Mountain Regional Housing Coalition that did a three year strategic plan. And so they have their policies in place. Um, it doesn't need to be possibly as robust as what occurred there, but looking at a consultant to help get that started and get that housing plan approval back to you so that they can actually start implementing.
And do you need our support or any direction from us? Or do you want to bring that back at some point?
That is certainly something that I would look for support and suggestions on if you agree on that route. You know, post consultant, we'd probably bring it back to you guys and talk about the, you know, permanent staffing or what that looks like.
Okay.
But really consultants are very good at getting these plans going and and building um, consensus around what that plan is to be able to bring it back to you. Otherwise, we'll be kind of operating with requests coming in ad hoc and having to bring them to you in the meantime.
Okay, um, yeah, just like you guys bring back a recommendation for structure. I think that that would be really helpful.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks, Hannah.
So much.
Okay, great. Um, we will now move on to ordinance 2023-13, which is an amendment to the downtown development authority board structure.
That's me. I'm just like on all night.
Yeah, this is great. This is great night. Thank you.
So what you have before you is a very simple ordinance amending um, the structure of the DDA board. As you know, the DDA is a statutory creature um, that was formed in the early 2000s by the city. Um, one of the sort of oversight functions that the council serves is determining what the board's structure looks like. Um, they have reached, they uh, board attorney reached out to me, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, and said, you know, with the fluctuation of membership on the board and the desire to be able to include people who are interested and excited about participating that may push above what the old limits were um, or drop below occasionally and have some problems with quorums uh, that they would like to just use statutory language, which is no less than five, no more than 11. Uh, with the caveat that one of those would be a liaison, a non-voting liaison from council, except for in the instances of tie votes, which is that's the way it is today. It's just um, board membership is at seven. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. This is a public hearing.
Okay, I'll bring it back to council for any questions for Carl. Councillor Cowp.
I'm just taking a look at the ordinance, Carl, and it it mentions the upper end of 11, but not the lower of five. Does it need to? Does that matter?
Uh, it does in section two. Yeah, in the in the effective section, it says.
Oh, I see.
No less than five, no more than 11.
Okay, perfect. Never mind.
Um, any other questions from council? Okay, any public comment? No one in person? Anybody online with questions regarding this item? Okay, we'll bring it back to council for comments or a motion. Councillor Zelinski.
I just have one comment that we should never discourage participation. And so the fact that we've had more applicants than seats is a good thing and I'm all for this.
With that in mind, do you want to make a motion?
I motion to. I was like, it's turned on. Um, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-13 to amend the downtown development authority board's structure.
You want to put your mic up? Okay, councillor Cowp.
A second for motion.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Zelinski, a second by councillor Cowp. Go ahead and call a question. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Wendy. Okay, thanks all. And to Aaron's point, thank you so much for those who want to volunteer. Okay, moving on, we're going so quickly and efficiently this evening. Kudos to all of us. I know, I know. Um, on to item number 14, ordinance 2023-14, adoption of the model traffic code.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This should only take about an hour and seven minutes. Uh, this is moving from the 2020 or 2010 model traffic code to the 2020 model traffic code. With some local amendments to it. I apologize. I do think the version that got into the packet has some um, some of the notes still in it uh, in the margins. We apologize for that. The correct version would get published. This also includes a couple of changes in penalty provisions um, that I think if the if the chief wants to speak to, he probably could uh, that were requested by the court. Nothing substantive really or substantial. It's just more cleanup on administration in both those areas. Uh, with that, the other thing that's unique about adopting codes by reference is that we will actually have another public, a another public hearing at the next council meeting, which is actually the official public hearing on, because we're adopting the code by reference, it's just the way the statute works. Um, so you'll hear this twice um, with the next hearing being the the official statutory public hearing on on adoption by reference. Uh, with that, I'm happy to try to answer any questions that I can. Um, if you really want to know, you know, how large that fine is going to be and what it's for, that's probably a better question for the chief.
Councillor Schacter.
Thank you. Just, I hope this is a quick one. Does this have any significant impact on our ability to control traffic within our city limits? Does it change that?
It doesn't really change it um, from where it is today. I know that I had a uh, question posed to me, you know, what is the authority on Grand Avenue? We can enforce traffic, we can enforce state laws, we can in enforce um, on our own city streets, obviously. Uh, we can't change the speed limits on Grand Avenue on a state highway. Uh, this doesn't affect the, you know, city engineer acting as the traffic engineer's ability to change speed limits, say on local streets. This is really more about what are the violations and how are those implemented? Um, to be consistent with the statewide model traffic code that is utilized by every jurisdiction in the state. And then we do have a few local amendments um, that are specific to us, um, because every community has those.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay, um, we'll take some public comment if they're in. So anyone here to comment on this model traffic code? Anyone online? Bring it back to council for comments and or a motion. Councillor Gottes.
I move that we approve ordinance 2023-13, the amendment of the down, I'm sorry. I move that we approve ordinance 2023-14, adoption of the model traffic code.
And councillor Zelinski.
I second the motion.
Okay, we'll do. Call that question as well. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, which is a resolution of 2023-27, supporting a grant application for a develop Department of Local Affairs DOLA, more housing now grant.
Thank you very much, Mayor Wusso. So um, as is required when we submit for a grant application, we we do have to have a resolution. Um, and so that the supporting information behind this is general information about the site and location and previous discussions and plans and uh, public input um, that has been received with regards to um, housing on that site. Um, what we are asking for is a 300, it's a $300,000 project, which is really a $270,000 grant with a 30%, a 10%, $30,000 match. And what's that? That purpose of that is is to do some of the preliminary high level engineering and concept design as well as some geotechnical analysis of whether or not uh, the site would be appropriate for geothermal. Which should that be determined that it is, uh, there are some other grant funds that we would go for and uh, develop that further, uh, which could potentially open up a significant amount of money to fund uh, some of the geothermal and other potential energy efficiencies for that site. Um, and we really do need to have this additional information to what's already been done so that we know if we qualify for some other grants and funds. So uh, we'd like to do this and um, as always, I I like to find other places and other entities to pay for it. So this gives us that opportunity to do some of that initial work on um, the DOLA dime.
Okay, councillor Cowp.
Um, I had a question, Beverly, concerning so if we were to get this and it works on conceptual design, right? So theoretically, will whatever consultant is hired to do this, um, they won't necessarily just jump right into housing design? Would there be a broader conversation about? You know, how does it fit with the two plans that have been done for the the confluence area? We have the 2017 plan and the 2019 and then some community conversation about, you know, how does this fit? What does the community want to see there? Would that be part of this whole conversation?
No. So so this potentially would be based on what the the concept was for that site, not not the confluence as a whole, but the Voglar site.
For that site, but in reference to those other plans, because that site was was referenced and envisioned as part of those other plans.
Right. So what this would be doing is looking at um, what, where we are with the uh, 2023 comprehensive plan.
Right.
And the update on the housing information that we just received.
Right.
Looking at those as well as what what makes the most sense for that site, given all of those things that have happened since the 2017 and the 2019 plan.
Okay.
And coming up with a single concept, kind of taking the four concepts that were already in that plan and and boiling it to a a concept that then the council could take a look at, weigh in on and determine um, what we want to proceed with. Then going forward, we would utilize that to do further community outreach engagement. But coalescing around around more of a a concept, not that that's carved in stone, but it's a lot easier to do that when you they, lots of comments have already been made on those four.
Right, right.
Really boiling it down to a concept and then getting more engagement around uh, that concept.
So but it sounds like, but it would take the confluence plans, it would put it into context of those.
To what the discussions have already been and then the additional information of those, of the housing and the comprehensive plan. But this particular grant itself is not to do that community engagement.
Okay.
This is really just the the initial design.
Okay.
That that like 10% design, geotechnical work that you need to know what is possible.
Right, higher level.
Very, very high level. Then um, I I will say that unfortunately, I really wish they'd given a little bit more time between these grant applications. We have another grant application that's due August 18th. Also through DOLA that would be for a larger sum of money.
Okay.
And in that, we would build the, all of that community outreach outreach and engagement to to take that further. And unfortunately, they're they're, they were due like within two weeks of each other. Now, we don't have to complete the first to apply for the second.
Okay.
But um, they would build on each other.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councillor Schacter.
Thank you. Some questions, a little reservation maybe because I'm a rookie, but also having on P and Z. And kind of related to what Commissioner Cowp just said, there is a ton to observe, absorb. Brownfield studies, confluence studies, old studies, new studies, none of which has been implemented yet. And there's a a general guidance from the comp plan revision, but nothing specific. Some of those plans are pretty scary to sell to the community, but my real question, twofold, what if what if we do these and what I'm, when I'm hearing you say, are these are more site readiness studies? What can it support? Is that correct? Not necessarily a mandate to put anything on and if we don't. And so my related question is, what obligation we have to move forward or what recourse or clawback is of these funds? If we don't do something that we're not ready to do and the and and DOLA wants us to do, what what happens there?
So so the first uh, grant, the one we're talking about right now, it's it's a planning grant. So the the concept of a planning grant is you're looking at the plan. Um, there is no obligation to actually build it. Um, so there, there would be no clawback because developing a 10% design and looking at whether or not geothermal is possible, that's all you're doing.
So we're not, we're not, I mean, at this level, we're not even talking about placement or number of units or.
No, we would be. There there already are in in the um, the work that was already done. There wasn't, there were four options um, that were envisioned and they're they're similar in the sense of looking at um, different types of of designs, like multi-family apartments, townhomes. So there there was variety in there. Um, what this would do is this would come down to looking at those, that work that was already done and then determining the things that have changed since then. So for example, we just recently adopted new requirements for development. We would be held to those same requirements. So looking at that new requirement, what kind of an impact would that have on this site?
But it is guiding in conceptual.
It it is and it is, but it is at its, so if you look at the level that we already had was very high level concept, this would be taking it to that next step uh, a little bit more finite and trying to coalesce around a design that then people could comment on if the council chose to go forward. But there isn't a commitment. But there isn't a commitment to go forward. It's coming up with a design that would enable us to have that conversation. It's difficult to have it when you're talking about such a wide variance between them.
Well, I still have a little concern about all of a sudden the new design, but that's my reservation, might be a little ahead of us. My other concern that is very specific to your request is I'm very reluctant to take any fees from 2C because we just assigned a 2C commission and recommendations, as I understand it, for funding, yes, we can recommend to them, but generally and particularly for confidence for how 2C was done, I want to see recommendations, particularly the first ones, to come from 2C to us. And so if this is critical, if council decides to support this, I would look for another source for funding, for sure.
Well, and one of the things is that as council had given direction previously to me, which is there's a partnership discussion with other entities, one being RFTA, another is Valley View, and the third is the college. And that we talked about workforce housing. And in that discussion was that we would potentially go to them and ask them to help fund this piece of it. So the match could come from them. And I can't commit to that, but $30,000 is within our budget inability to say we can match to the grant.
I would just not want to see it. It's not time to take it from 2C. I'm still a little hesitant. We may be running ahead of ourselves. I understand your enthusiasm and the grant and the partnership stuff. My last question is more techno, maybe to the attorney or you, do we outright own Voglar now without any question?
That's complicated. No, it is. We are finalizing the plat, subdivision plat, which actually you guys will probably see in a month or so. Because you need to accept some right of way out of that to finalize that IGA under which that flip, all of the conditions have been met. We've got a little cleanup on title that needs to be done. And so like I said, that plat will be in place and we're able to take that transfer probably within the next month or so.
That it would be granted, that it would be officially ours?
Yeah, it would be officially.
Through that federal process?
No, no, no. We're done with the federal process. 6F is completely done. We are working on the subdivision plat. Obviously, we're kind of, it's a variety of little parcels that have been aggregated. And then also the flip, the IGA we have to the land swap where the parking is for the grade school is actually still on city property because we haven't, we had to get through the 6F process. So that's what I'm saying is that that final subdivision plat that creates the parcel upon which the school is and the Voglar Park parcel as a clean singular unit will be coming through. I would love to be able to do it administratively. I think we're going to have to bring it to you because you need to accept some right of way as part of that. So that's one of the triggers that gets it up to your level, but it's basically a two lot subdivision.
That's all I have this particular moment. Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Gotis.
Does, for the grant, do we have to specify what fund it comes out of for the purpose of the grant?
No, just that we can, that we commit to match to it.
Okay, so we could potentially pass this without specifying even amongst us tonight exactly where it comes out of.
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Zelinski.
So I, yeah, I would encourage us to find another source of funding other than 2C for this particular opportunity.
That was just an option that the council could direct that or not.
Counselor Wymer.
Dr. Marshall, my question would be if we pass on this DOLA grant opportunity tonight, how often does this particular sort of grant present itself?
This particular grant is once a year.
Once a year.
Once a year. Right now, so this is part of that, there's several chunks of funds that were all sort of part of the same EIAF, which is do you remember what the acronym is? It's the Energy Grant. And so there's different chunks, and this is one piece of it. The benefit of applying for it now is the more housing now grant, they expect to have another, this is kind of a mid-year chunk, so it's slightly smaller. The next will be probably in January or February, and that'll be for the whole year allotment. The benefit of applying for it now is there weren't as many entities that had what I would call a almost shovel-ready project, something that was already designated, identified that they could jump on. By the time we get to the new, the next round, there will be more agencies lined up.
Are we obligated to spend the grant in any certain period of time?
They don't necessarily have to do it within like a short timeframe. I know it's within a certain period of time. I want to say three years, but I think it might be less than that. But it's a longer period of time. The reason why we would want to spend it sooner rather than later is that is the information that will open the door to the bigger grants, which, so for example, there is geothermal money right now and energy efficiency funds that are coming out of the federal government. We will need to know the answer to that geothermal question in order to apply for that. And so we wouldn't necessarily want to do that on our own dime. But if we can use this and then that opens the door. And one of the options is if this is available, there is a 30% tax cash back that's coming from the federal government for anything that's related to new construction that is energy producing. So that could be like solar, geothermal, those kinds of things, which in the past, that was not something open to governmental agencies. It's relatively new. In fact, I don't believe the Treasury Department's quite written all of the code on that. So we would definitely want to take advantage of something like that, should it be possible. So we've got to know the question, the answer to the question of, is it possible? Before we can go forward with it. But if you could do something like geothermal under this housing, then you're getting a lot closer to a net zero energy consumption for new housing stock, which that's really an amazing thing to do.
So tonight you're asking us to make a decision just on that one grant?
Yes, just this, just this one grant.
And then the second grant, is that, is that next session?
That will probably be next session, and we will have more information on it at that time. We have had several letters of support for this, for this grant application. I've also been asked to do a quick presentation to the county board on Monday to see if they'd be interested in submitting their letter of support as well as RFTA on Thursday. So that, obviously, it makes the grant application more favorable, the more support that you get.
Counselor Sackter.
Sorry.
Oops, okay, we'll do it again.
Thanks. Sorry, I don't want to be a thorn, but I am. If I understood you correctly, this is very conceptual. It's, I thought I heard you say at the 10% level. My only hesitation is I would almost fear seeing a study or consultant come back with a plan for these units, these number of units and these specific sites and this type as opposed to we think this can support a certain number of sites because to come up with another plan at this level would be confusing to the public and I think confusing to us. Is that, what do you see coming out of this?
No, it's going to be at the level of this many of units in this general, because we already have four that's already, they've already gone through NEPA. So a lot of that was already done back in the 2017, which was approved. So as that design, so what we're trying to do is take that to the next level, which is coalescing behind a concept and arrangement, a design. Now, again, that's not carved in stone because there's still a public engagement process, just like there would be for any other development of that size, which means larger than 25 units. So the public still gets to weigh in on this. There's still, most definitely.
And my next question would be perhaps to you or Carl or both. When you talk about geothermal, are you talking about in-ground heat transfer? Or are you talking potential geothermal water resources or either?
We're talking about the heat and energy source underground.
Underground, not water, but heat exchange from temperature.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in. I actually haven't worked on this, but I will tell you that there is a fair degree of potential under Glenwood for heat transfer.
That's.
It also comes with a lot of risk and a fair amount of pushback from our two users.
Okay.
Historically, so I want to be careful about sort of how we think about that. But heat transfer is primarily what we're talking about. If you can pick that up at 50 or 100 feet even to do that heat transfer, it's a super efficient heat pump.
I just wanted to make sure we're not prematurely walking into illegal hornet's nest.
No, and, and right now, we're just looking at potential. And I know Matt and I had a quick conversation about this. You know, one of the benefits would be trying to make this particular development net zero. So not necessarily looking at something of the magnitude of generating enough to then put back on the grid. It would be that whatever incremental amount it would potentially have added to the grid, just making sure that that's not felt. So between solar and potentially other uses, trying to find a way so that it does not have an impact on our resources.
One last one, if you would. Does this, at this stage, does this obligate us in the future to any particular partners at this point?
It does not. It is only saying that our concept is that this would be a partnership with other
Entities.
Entities within, within the city. And I will tell you that one of the, I had a quick conversation with our representative at DOLA was that this is not to, this is to solve a Glenwood area problem. So this is a workforce housing for people who work in Glenwood, not necessarily just the city of Glenwood, but within Glenwood. So this isn't attempting to solve something for people who might work elsewhere up valley who commute through here. This is really looking at the people that work here and could, should there be workforce housing, live here and not have to commute to get here. That's what we're targeting.
Thank you.
I think that there, I need one bit of clarification before I would be comfortable moving forward with this. And that is that, that in the event, that ultimately this parcel, we're looking at it in a, obviously an in-depth way to get better understanding of potential use in the future. But by no means will we be held to any functionality that's found in the reporting that we will not be tied to any other organization. We don't have to pay this back and even that we don't do something that, you know, I need that guarantee that the community will have lots of opportunities to help us shape this parcel because this is a valuable parcel to our community. I'd like to see, and I think everyone on this council might have a different vision of what the best use of this land is. However, for me, in order to feel comfortable moving forward on this grant, I need absolute guarantee that that process, potentially reconnecting with the community and saying, it's been a while since we've asked the community how they want to use this confluence, which in my opinion is precious, you know, parkland potential. This will not further commit and/or inhibit that until we have that community engagement. I need that absolute guarantee.
There is, because again, this is a plan. And the purpose of it is to determine what is possible. But at a more finite level than the broader plan that was considered previously. So it's taking it, you know, from 50,000 feet to 30,000 feet. It's just refining it. It does not commit us to actually building it. It's giving us that ability to define what we think the project will be. And then obviously, before we proceeded, just like any other development, we would have to go through an engagement, some form and multiple.
So worst case scenario, we commit 30,000 because we can't get anyone else to pay it. We pay 30,000 from our coffers, not from 2C, but just from the money that we have. We do the planning grant, they come back with some data, we obviously maybe have some public engagement and we never build anything. And that's the end of it. It's a darn it, we got 300,000, what is it? 270,000. We put in 30 and nothing came of it. And that could be, that's the worst case scenario.
That is correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's what I needed here. I appreciate that. Are there any other council comments or questions?
All right, comments or any questions?
Well, at this point, let's just do, okay, I think we can be on to comments, but I think, okay, sure. Hold on one second.
There you go. For legal again, just to clarify on the land transfer, when, when that transfer gets completed from, when was that, 2010 or?
2015. It was not quite 2010. It hasn't been quite 10 years. It's getting close.
But when that's completed, is there any, is that land free and clear to be developed? Does it have to go to vote? Does it have?
No, not to, not to develop. And actually, one of the things that we'll do, one of the things that we will do in accepting that deed is to lay out in a resolution pretty clearly what the council's current intention around it is in terms of not being put to what is underneath the charter of public use so that we can have these conversations about partnerships and things like that.
Okay.
So, so that's, that's kind of part of that process, which is why I'm not going to just like drop the deed in the, in the record and call it a day. Because I do think it's important for you guys to lay out and accepting that, your intentions as to how that is used. And you know, we've seen that come up recently. So that, that would be my comment on that. Is it like, we will be able to do, you know, it's, it's fresh ground for the city. The city has never used for any purpose.
Okay.
Because it doesn't own it.
Right.
So you have the opportunity to lay out kind of what your vision is for how it might be used. And I think that's important to do in a, in a resolution form. I sort of learned my lesson about deals in the courtroom. Not, not creating a clear record. So that's where we would be at on that. And I would anticipate, like I said, that I think Richard and I have been working with Chad Lee, who's representing the school district and the county on cleaning up just some, there's a lot of overlapping old easements, right of ways, title issues, and we're just trying to get it clean. So whatever council chooses and the community chooses to do with it, it is ready to go.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions from council and/or comments? Counselor Sackter.
Sorry, just a, just a rehash in simple terms. So if I understand this correctly, what we've got is we have a leverage grant. We find 30 grand, $30,000 for 270. My feeling is it shouldn't come from 2C. We'll see what, I hear some consensus there that this is conceptual, building on what's been done in the past, but there's no obligation to even build on the property. We should have free and clear deed and we'll, we'll determine the intent and latitude of purpose before that deed is recorded. We're not obligated to any partners, but conceptually partnership and local workforce housing and geothermal will likely all be part of the initial study, building on what's been done in the past. Would that be a correct summary?
Yes. Oh, I like those one word answers.
Thank you.
Nice be done. As this is not an ordinance, I will not be taking public comment this evening. But I do appreciate, and you know, the continued interest and we will obviously update people as we go about this. I think everyone probably heard that there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. Counselor Gotis.
So I feel like we're beating, this question may be beating a dead horse, but if what comes back after this $270,000 study is, you know what, this is the best place for high-end condos. Like that, that seems completely at odds with what a DOLA more housing for all grant would be. But if that's what comes back, we're good, right?
They're not looking at it from the perspective of the dollar value. It's looking at units, density. For example, the, the concept that was. For example, the, the concept that was, um. Put out was that, that there would be some sort of multi-use building, whether it be retail or some other. Type of use on one of the ground levels and then apartments above it. So how many units could that sustain? Not necessarily would it be a five thousand dollar a month apartment or a thousand dollar a month, but it is. But right now, what we have proposed to DOLA is that it is workforce. For the purpose of people who work here. So that, that is the intent. Now, if it came back that, um, so the, the four variations that were in the previous. Uh, consideration that was reviewed and approved by the, the council was. One was, I think the smallest number of units was ninety-eight units.
Ninety-five.
Uh, ninety-five and one, I, I believe was one seventy-eight was the, the top end. So, uh, if we made an assumption. To start with of one fifty and they did the analysis and the analysis was, well, if you're gonna do this. With everything that, that we're finding out, a parking garage underneath, multi-use building, blah, blah, blah. Um, based on the needs identified in the housing, we put all this together and we recommend no more than a hundred and twenty-five units. And it should be probably X number of townhomes, X number of this, X number of that. That would be what I would expect to come out of this report. Now. Whether or not that should be high-end, low-end, medium-end, that, that they're not determining. They're determining the number of units. Uh, the arrangement of it, and especially considering the most recent update. Uh, requiring certain percentage of, of different types of bedroom sizes.
So I guess my comment, um, thank you. Is, you know, and, and I've mentioned this to you, Dr. Marshall, and, and maybe several others is, I, I just have a. Um, you know, when you look at that two thousand seventeen planning document that was passed by a council, had public input. It, you know, it sells out redevelopment of Vogler Park and one of the couple of the bullet points are. You know, bring additional affordable housing to downtown, um, explored shared parking opportunities, create a walkable mixed income neighborhood. Um, you know, and I think especially the shared parking opportunities, whether we need a parking garage to park all the other things we'd want to do in the confluence, but. You know, I guess my heartburn a little bit, and, and maybe not with this grant, but the idea of taking such a key section and. Part of the overall master plan, which has been done twice now, the two thousand seventeen, the two thousand nineteen Brownfields area wide. You know, those are, I feel like we're piecemeal, we're taking one spot, saying this is what's gonna happen, this is what might happen. But to, to contemplate that in a vacuum without going, well, what does it look like? How's it affect this parking lot over here? How does it impact? Along Seventh Street? How does it impact, you know, a park potentially at the confluence or, or other businesses that we'd want? Um, I, I think that's tough for me. And, you know, we've seen what has happened in Cowan Drive, for example, for a neighborhood. Not, not bagging on your neighborhood, but there wasn't a lot of master planning, right? We're looking at. That is a neighborhood that developed lot by lot and we, we are dealing with that lack of overall vision and planning for a neighborhood. And so when we're talking about potentially a hundred and seventy-eight units, but not contemplating, how does that parking and that scalability interact with other areas of. The larger confluence. That, that to me feels like we might be piecemealing this thing and, and so that, that's tough for me.
Thank you. Councillor Weimer.
I move to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, supporting a grant application for Department of Local Affairs, DOLA. More housing now grant with the stipulation that the thirty thousand dollar matching fund will not come from two C funding.
Hey, councillor Zelinski.
I would like to second that motion.
Okay. Um, I would like to, now that we have a first by councillor.
Mitchell Weimer.
Second by councillor Aaron Zelinski, um, I would like to make one comment and that is that I, I truly hear a concern. That this area, that maybe it's time for our community to give some feedback and a council to give some feedback and figure out exactly how we want to use the confluence area. That maybe we have, it's time for a redo and maybe we can be doing this concurrently. Um, while this grant and optimistically we get this grant, um, but that maybe it's time for us to be discussing that and getting it in motion. Um, instead of looking back at, you know, possibly appropriate plans, but quite possibly. A, a, a new twenty twenty-three version, a twenty twenty-four version of how the community wants to appropriate. Appropriate and define the, the lands there and how we want to move forward as a community. Um, councillor Cap.
Um, I, I will support this motion tonight. I, I believe that it's a. It's. I can't see a downside to moving forward with this grant and it's a planning grant and being able to look at that site and. Talk about what might be possible there. I think we have solid plans in the twenty seventeen confluence plan and the twenty nineteen plans. They looked extensively at the area. So many options there, but nothing, you know. Set in, in stone. They're very loose kind of plans to look at. Um, so I, I may support that idea of looking at the confluence area a little bit more, but to me this. This, uh, Vogel R piece has always been discussed as community workforce housing. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. So I look forward to being able to. Spend more time planning on that.
Councillor Sackler.
Um, I'd be willing to move forward, given. The feedback I've gotten and the motion, but I also hear from Commissioner Godis, Commissioner Calpin, maybe underlying all of us that. And I'd be hesitant to go public too soon. Until we have a better idea, whether it's after this study or while we push for it. Integration, we've talked about, we've charged the river commission with a river master plan and. Like Jonathan says, Seventh Street retail. So I have no problem going forward to this as long as it is guiding and gives us capacity. Issues is what I'm hearing and saying, okay, before we do anything else. Let's work on more integration, which I'm hearing.
I think, I think we may all be.
So, thank you.
Kind of on the same page. Um, one more comment, councillor Godis.
No, I'd, I'd like, I'd like to ask for friendly amendment if this, uh, Mitchell is, is, uh. Willing to contemplate it, uh, to, to that point. Just the idea that we contemplate the, uh, confluence at some point is great, but I'd like if you would be willing to incorporate it in the motion. Uh, we had, hold on a sec, sorry. I'll start my, my, my thought process again. I apologize. Shelley, I think was the only one on council with me. We had, I think, insight when part of the Brownfields, um, conversation, we had them come out from DC. And talk about the confluence, talk about their plan, talk about what worked, what didn't work, why, and again, this is two thousand nineteen, so what works and doesn't work may not be the same. But, um, as part of that motion, I would love to have by the end of the year, I would say, um, so not next month. But have them come out and give this council in a work session. Pretty much the same run through hour-long presentation that maybe a lot of us haven't had. And so. I think that that addresses kind of that contemplation, at least for my fear of. You know, if we get the grant, then how do we as a council want to start integrating that into everything else? So. What, what say you councillor?
Um, just for a little bit of clarification, Jonathan.
Yes.
Sorry, no.
No, 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 go ahead.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I just, um, I can't remember. So what you're asking for is that the. Um, the author of the Brownfields.
Yeah.
Study that we bring them back to do a presentation regarding.
If, if they're, and if they're not available, because both community builders also worked on it. So, I mean, ideally. Um, I represented from community builders and, and yes.
Yeah, no, I just, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
I can't actually remember which.
Yeah, I can't either, uh, and, and I'm not looking for a specific like random developer or whatever who has an idea.
Yeah, no, I, I was just more just about the author of the Brownfield study, which I, I can't remember, works out of like North.
I, I would say the author of the Brownfield study and invite a representative of community builders who did the two thousand seventeen as well to just discuss that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand what that was.
And I guess my question is, do we need to have two different motions here? Like, are we starting to convolute? Like, should we just say, like, we got a support for this grant? And concurrently you make a motion, um, that I think would be my.
That would actually be.
Yeah.
From our person.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
So let's go ahead and, and that first motion. That was by Mitchell to support it. Let's go ahead and call that question and then we'll allow councillor Godis to ask his.
Oh.
Yeah.
Councillor Shacter, yes. Councillor Calp, yes. Councillor Weimer, yes. Councillor Godis, no. Mayor Wusso, yes. Councillor Zelinski, yes. Motion passes five, one.
And two, if I may.
You may, and then I, but I do want to have a comment after you make it.
Okay. Uh, the reason I voted against that is I just, the order of, if we could have done that, my motion first, I probably would have gone there. Um, so with that, I will, uh, make a motion that by the end of the year, we have a work session with. Uh, the authors of the Brownfield study, the two thousand nineteen and the two thousand seventeen study, which I believe was community builders. Come and give, um, this council a presentation of the overall confluence and how things relate to each other.
Councillor Weimer.
Second to.
Oh, sorry. Let's go ahead and say.
Second to.
Okay, um, so we have a first and a second and, and I, my only comment is that. I am a little hesitant to continue to use the same. Organization that can, that has historically given us to just want the same consistently. Um, it's like having someone from out of town come in and want to tell me how to decorate my house. Um, I feel like having someone local who really has a good understanding of our community. And a really good relationship with our community may be a better, um, organization to give us direction on how the community feels about that. Um.
Uh, just to respond to that, so the, the group that did the, uh, yeah, it's like, uh, the group that did that, uh, did spend a, a significant amount of time in our community with. Uh, individual department heads, uh, community members, uh, the DDA. Uh, there, there's a lot of work that went into that. So I don't know, um. That they're parachuting in from DC because the work that went in was very community-based. But I think to address that, I think having community builders who is located and having both of them here to present jointly.
Yeah.
That clears or helps.
So as long as you make a motion to your first, to your motion or amendment to your motion, thank you. That just says that you, that, I, I think community members might have been in there, but I just.
It was.
Full clarity.
Yes.
Clarity, okay.
It, it was in the original motion, but I will clarify that it is a joint presentation by community builders. And the, uh, organization that did the Brownfield area wide in two thousand nineteen jointly.
Councillor Calp.
And I'm turning you off.
My only concern on the motion is that there would be, there would be costs to bring in out that consultant. Again, and not knowing what that would be and. What the benefit weigh off with that. I have concerns about that. I think. That we could work with. Staff and local, you know, community builders who worked on the previous plan. It, without pulling in again, the out, the out of town consultant that will cost us money to bring them here.
Councillor Zelinski.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that question. If that was something that perhaps staff could step in rather than bringing in the outside consultants, perhaps that, that. Presentation could be made once again, since this council wasn't, this iteration of the council wasn't. Um, privy to that.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Um, so what I'm hearing is that there's, um. General consensus that community builders should be at the table and potentially staff, but there's a question about whether or not the DC consultants. Um, I'm gonna let our city manager speak for just a minute.
I, I just have a question because I've heard two things and I, I just wanted to, because they. They might kind of cross over and conflict because I, I haven't been making notes. Um, one of them is that we might want a refreshed confluence plan, which is. To look at the things that, not to ignore the things that have been done up until this point, but also to look at some of the other things that have been done subsequent to that point. So for example, the housing information, the comprehensive plan. Um, any, any other work that's been done since that was done and try to bring all of that together to see. How does the, how does that fall into a plan for the confluence? Which would be different than going back and looking at the twenty nineteen in a vacuum of. Not also looking at the things that have been done since then. So that's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
Though, though seem like they, they might kind of conflict because are we looking forward or looking back? Uh, uh, but we, you know, looking forward might also include having. Um, I'm sorry, community builders, did I get that right? Community builders, um, participate in that refresh since they were so intimately involved. In that twenty nineteen Brownfields and everything. Having them be part of that refresh of pulling in that new information. Um, and then doing a presentation on that. So I, I just want to make sure that I'm not. I don't want to create more work.
Sure.
I'd like some clarity on that.
Councillor Godis.
Yeah, so did my motion, no. To everything you said, uh, no, I know, at no point did my motion include anything about re-examining or going forward or a new or an update or refresh. We are basing so much of our discussion and decisions tonight, and we've mentioned numerous times, the two thousand seventeen community builder plan and the two thousand nineteen area. Wide Brownfield plan. That's it. That's the extent. I think we need a level set of where we are at with it, because both of those were. Uh, wide-ranging, community-wide processes with community members from boards and commissions and council and community members. So I don't want to throw that out the window and start again or refresh it or build on it. I just want to level set us as a council to what has been accomplished as a community for those members who have not. Period. Now, to the question of cost, I think it's important. To have the most recent authors of the most recent comprehensive plans, a hundred and six pages. Be able to be available to talk about this plan since, again, we refer to it so much. Um, if, if they are able to do a Zoom call. And, you know, five thousand dollars is, is choking us up on, on, you know, getting a well-rounded presentation on this. Hundred million dollar piece of project possibly. I, I would say let's spend the five thousand dollars to get them here, but, um, that's not, my, my motion is we have a joint presentation. If, if the cost is excessive, I will leave that up to our city manager. If the cost seems excessive, um, to whatever you view as excessive, Dr. Marshall. Um, I would say let's have them zoom in and pay them a little bit for their time. Um, if the cost is not excessive, I think always having them here in person to present in conjunction with community builders would be my preference, but I will leave that to you and staff.
And, and I'm gonna jump in really quickly and I'm just kind of for those who may be watching us, which may be few at this point, just kind of. Discuss the elephant in the room and that is that in twenty seventeen, um, the Brownfield study indicated that the confluence area. Would be a merging of both some commercial and residential areas. The residential areas would likely be a higher end. Um, but there was, there was a mix that, you know, it certainly was diverse. Um, it. It didn't have maybe as much parkland as some of us like me would like to see. It had maybe more commercial where some others would see value to having yet another commercial area in, in the town core. That is not where I'm at. So it's harder for me to support looking back at a two thousand seventeen and a two thousand nineteen version. Um, when I do know that the conplan was an extensive document with a lot of community feedback. So much community feedback, so many opportunities for feedback from different boards and commissions. And while I like the idea that there may be a, a, a degree of commercial. I am, I know the world has changed a lot since twenty twenty. And with that in mind, a twenty seventeen plan may not resonate with our community members the way that it does in twenty twenty-three. Um, and so I'm very hesitant to spend money having somebody come back out and tell us some, a plan they had in twenty seventeen. And nineteen, um, with a different council, a different group of community members with a different mindset at that time. We have, um, let's call a spade a spade. We have a, a growth concern. We have a community that, that maybe is a little on edge. We certainly have transportation concerns and, and traffic concerns and congestion. I believe that we do need to stop and reflect on where we are now. Where we're going and what the community wants from this council, but also what it wants for its future. What it wants for its children that are growing up and if we are gonna build more, more housing to accommodate workforce. Maybe we need to say. Our city-owned lands should be protected and that may be more dedicated to parks. And recreational opportunities and connections to the, to the river. And so I don't want to discount that plan completely. But that was at a different moment in time. And so I'm really hesitant to lean so heavily on it when we have new documents that can support maybe more where we're going. And that's, that's where I'll stop and I'll, I'll let councillor Zelinski jump in.
So for somebody that is fairly new to this level of. Integration and awareness. I would appreciate the opportunity for just more. I would appreciate the opportunity for just more information. Um, I would imagine that staff is more aware of these documents than I am. And I think that that a lot of time and energy went into that, and I feel like that's information. Okay, um, I very much agree with all of your points. But I don't know how we can decide where we're going unless we understand where we're coming from. And I feel like that is relevant to the conversation. Which is why I asked if that is a presentation that maybe could come from a staff level or a local level rather than coming from the consultant themselves, only because that's already been done. This is just almost like, I'm looking for like the Cliff Notes version, you know, just like, just a refresher, just an awareness so that I have a really solid understanding of the foundation of this conversation, so that when we're moving forward, I'm moving forward with purpose. So that's, I would appreciate that opportunity.
Thanks for that observation. Counselor Cal. Whoops, hold on, there you go.
Okay, and I, and I really appreciate the comments from Counselor Zalinski because I think that really what, what Counselor Otis might be getting to is a um, a relook and a refresh of starting up the conversation of broader confluence development again. A, there are several things we, we um, I don't think are ready to jump into that yet. We're certainly not ready to do it without a very in-depth conversation with, with the DDA. Um, but I agree that I think the education might be very, would be helpful to this council. My question would be on the consultant who did the twenty nineteen, do we even know if the same staff are available or there, or I mean, that's a big question these days. So it, would that be, is there value in there or, or not? To pay someone, if it's just a staff member who didn't even work on it and then I, I see no value in that beyond where we'd get more value from bringing the DDA in, in having staff and others look at it.
Yeah, I was just gonna jump in and say, I, you, you know, there's um, I, I feel like, we feel like we need to get to someplace on this tonight. Uh, and I might suggest that we send out those documents to you guys because I know that a few of them. Actually, and that you take the time, you know, to really dig through them because they're voluminous. Right. Uh, particularly on the Branfield study to, to Jonathan, to Counselor Otis's point about the community engagement, because I know, I think one or two of my partners uh, got sucked away for months on end. Um, to participate, you know, so there was a broad range of participation. So um, I, I almost feel like when you guys are comfortable ha- having made it through the material, then we can come back either to staff level or with community builders, or we can reach out and see if the consultants are still around. Um, that was four years ago, a lot changed for a lot of people in that time period. Um, but I, I think maybe that might be the more methodical approach.
Yeah, and I, and I would agree with that. I would, my, my caveat would be, let's include the DDA. And then there was one document that I don't believe was attached tonight and maybe Hannah knows, but there was a follow-up to the twenty nineteen, we did a conceptual design on the River Park. And I think that might be something that we should get in here. There was a, there, there was a consultant thing came in and actually did some concept plans just on the, the park along the Riverway of the.
Yeah, I, I'll have to go back and look. I, I confess to age getting me. I don't have any recollection.
Well, me too. I, I could have just dreamed about it, but.
Counselor Schacter.
Thank you. I, you know, I almost, one of my reservations about the resolution we approved was I didn't have time this week to, to read to my satisfaction. All the documents were attached, even though I had read them through planning and zoning and other. And my thought is I, I'm not ready to support Commissioner Otis because I'm getting a little tired of consultants. I think I would agree with what Carl just said. If we spend some time going through these documents, plus we have the new comp plan. Um, plus we are going to get something out of this study. I don't know when that we do some digesting. And I think we've got a, there, there's a lot of moving forces about density, about parkland, about we've, we've, we've charged River Commission. I would say we do this differently. Rather than asking other consultants to come in, we do the homework and we dedicate maybe by the end of the year, an entire work session, not, not part of a work session, entire work session for us and or DDA and or Clark to come in and say, okay, what are we, what are we gathering from this in terms of what we need as a council to move forward, not just with Vogalar? Well, and maybe the River Commission has done something by then, say, let's, let's us be the first piece. And then what's the next step as far as going to the public and others? So I'd rather us do the homework, lean on staff to an extent, but not too much yet. Consider an entire workshop. I don't care if it's a whole day. It might, but at least our normal three hour block and move forward in that direction toward how do we start absorbing and integrating this before we go forward making a preemptive move that we may regret.
Um, hold on one second. So Counselor Otis, you made the original motion. You've received quite a bit of feedback. Um, I don't know if you want to amend your motion, move forward with it. I'm gonna let you.
To, I'll, I'll just clarify. So I think what you said, Sumner, is my motion with maybe not flights in DC people here, because you said, I, I'm, I, I, when I'm hearing was, I don't want any more consultants. Well, Clark Anderson's a consultant.
No, I.
But hold, so he, he, he is a consultant. And so having him come in, even though he's a local consultant, he's still a consultant. But you know, the two thousand nineteen area wide, the only reason to have staff speak to that when they weren't the authors of that, I don't think, if we have questions about, oh, how did this happen? How did that happen? They're not the authors of the study. So if, if we want to completely discount the last community wide study and uh, uh, effort that's specific to the confluence, want to just discount it. That's fine. But I mean, this, this thing was hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think to just discount it out of hand because of the location of where Sean Garrigan is from, I think is, is um, might be not in the intent of the motion to just level set and gather information. So.
Out of fairness, man, I'm not.
Hold on one, hold on one second. If you want, okay, great. Go ahead.
My, I am not discounting anything. I'm saying let's spend the homework and time absorbing it. If we need a little leverage, use Clark, the consultant who's right here. But what I'm also feeling is I'm not saying it's irrelevant, but a lot of the forces or, or factors that went into these studies may not, or perhaps do not reflect what's going on right now in twenty twenty-three in Glenwood. I consider our role to absorb and modify as necessary, and I don't think we need consultants rehashing it, other than Clark answering questions or guidance if needed. That's my, it's not discounting the study at all.
Okay, hold on one second. So I am gonna let Counselor Otis jump back in, an amended motion. We'll see if there's support afterwards.
So my motion, I will amend it to say by the end of the year, we will have a work session of an undetermined length. Could be a day, could be whatever, um, where we are presented uh, information on the various studies and history of the confluence with the subject experts that uh, will help guide our information and learning. And, 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 and to your point, Sumner, of digesting the information, I think that goes without saying. If we have a half day work session or a three hour work session or a one hour work session scheduled, and it's about these two plans, I think we all just assume we're gonna be doing that. My, my concern is that we just say, oh, let's just study this. And like a month later, we're all thinking about other stuff and you know, the hottest topic rises and we haven't looked at it and it just ekes on and ekes on. So that's, that's why I want it date specific to December thirty first.
Great. Um, he has amended his motion. Would you like to amend your second?
So amended.
Thank you. Okay, um, Counselor Schacter, I'll let you jump in and then we can probably call this question.
Yeah, I'm ready. But my only clarification is this is not, my concept is this workshop is not just for us to learn what happened. But with the aid of consultant who can bridge what's happened and what's happening now, that it's also proactive, not reactive. That we as a council start looking at that plan and saying yes, no, maybe erase, change. That's all. So really, we're asking for a long workshop to consider the past and the present and future.
Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Cal.
I just, I just had a quick friend, friendly amendment request and see if you're interested, but that would be to include the DDA in the work session.
Hold on one second.
I think they also have a.
Counselor Otis.
New people.
I mean, I, I would absolutely uh, invite them to participate, but they were heavily involved in both studies. So um, as a participate, as a, as a um, yes, as an observer and a participant, absolutely. Uh, uh, and I don't want to necessarily make that amendment. I think that just goes without saying, it's a public meeting. We'll just invite Angie and any other representative, representative, but unless you think we need to have it.
Well, I just think they, they have a new director and a new uh, quite a few new members that may have the same, you know, questions that our council.
Mike, Mike.
I'll, okay, I'll, I'll just say I'll amend my motion to uh, make sure the staff invites the DDA.
Okay, and Counselor Weimer.
So second to.
Okay, perfect. We're gonna call the question. Thank you.
I, I, I hope the actual discussion takes less time, even this one.
You're welcome, Carl.
Right? I was just about to say.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Um, we are going to turn off Jonathan's mic. And we're gonna move on. Um, item number sixteen, resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty, selling recycled road base at the landfill. See. Counselor Zalinski.
I read it. I make a motion to approve.
Counselor Weimer.
So second to.
Call that question.
We appreciate you, Matt. Thanks, Matt. I need three more votes.
That was awesome.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, great. Um, we are going to move on then to council comments. I'm gonna start with Counselor Schacter.
Start at the other end.
Yeah, uh, Counselor Zalinski, you want to start? Um, Counselor Cal, then we'll just go ahead with you.
Okay. I have a comment about the um, just two comments on the, on the trail up to the Lemwood Cemetery, that Holiday's Trail. We have had, especially during the heat wave. That also happens in the winter and at random times throughout the year. We will have people come and park at the trailhead and they either leave a pet in the car or a child or and any, anyone, and they will hike up to the trail and back, which can take anywhere from forty-five minutes to an hour and leave the car idling the whole time. And we do have an idling ordinance. I believe it's uh, code section one hundred dot oh six oh. Have to look that up. But um, so I have two questions for this council to consider at a future meeting, and that would be one. And we put up some signs at the trailhead that say uh, no idling beyond this time limit per city ordinance, possibly get some enforcement, but I'm not so much on the enforcement. It's just raising the awareness. But I'd also wonder if the council would be interested in discuss, discussing um, dropping the time allowed for idling from, it's at fifteen minutes, which was probably set in the eighties. Um, and nowadays, most of, most ordinances that you see out there are anywhere from three to five minutes because newer vehicles, they just don't need to idle like that. So um, that's my first comment. The second comment is on the trail going up to the cemetery, a couple of um people from our neighborhoods that hike it all the time have noticed there was a tree that was uh, started about ten years ago. Someone put ribbons on it for remembrance. It has turned into kind of a trash tree. It has masks hanging on it and underwear and all kinds of things. And, and we're just thinking maybe the time has passed for that and um, it's time to clean that tree up and just let it be a tree again versus a place to hang people's, anything they want to hang there. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Otis.
Uh, on, in Park West, there are stop signs. Um, I guess I'm talking to Matt because Ryan's not around, but there's stop signs on the bike, uh, the sidewalk slash bike path and the sidelines are incredibly difficult pulling out of Park West, especially to your right, and bikes come zooming by because they treat it like a bike lane. So that's why we put stop signs. Both stop signs in both directions are missing. One, the stop sign is missing. The other one, the pole got ran over and it's missing on boat, or on both sides on the um, south side of Park West Drive entrance to Midland. Yes. Yep, yep.
Yeah, so I was gonna let you know that one of those ended up in my backyard. So they will probably.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments? Okay, Counselor Schacter.
Thank you. Have you, um, did, are we, do we have a, a date to follow up on the ranking sheets that you gave us? Terms of a workshop or session?
The strategic plan.
What?
The council priorities.
Yes, the, the one where you were the only one that, that provided them.
I'm not prompting that.
No, I, 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 I am saying you were the only one that responded. Uh, it was today.
Oh, darn it.
Yeah, and yeah. Yes, of course, by midnight. Um, I, I, I don't know if I said a timeframe, so eleven fifty-nine would still be today. Um, and we were waiting until uh, Mayor Proton Dem was re- returned. So it is on the work session for August seventeenth.
Okay, um, at some, I, I guess I could call them, but if we had any feedback about how the priority or what the River Commission is doing with our charge to come up with a master river plan.
Sorry, I was, I, I'm gonna forward, before we transition, I'm just gonna say I'm, I'm forwarding the priority list to the remainder of the council members in individual emails. Um, Counselor Cal.
We did have a River Commission meeting this week, Wednesday morning, and they're talking about their goals and priorities, and one of them is to start looking at that master plan. They might want a little more clarification about exactly what council was looking for, but.
Okay, good. Um, what else did I have? Some issues I can bring up with staff. Um, I mean, do we have, I think, do we have that debriefing and powdering as part of our schedule?
I don't believe it's part of our schedule. I think it was just an internal document to, to better help us better understand.
Well.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say unless council as, as a whole, and I, I realize it's um, you know, Sumner, you were there from the beginning. So actually, you probably have the best comments on if the process could have been better since you were on housing and the planning commission. Um, but I, I think unless council directs us to set aside time to do that, um, that, that's kind of a heavy lift. You got a pretty detailed email of what has occurred um, from Hannah in terms of process. And I guess probably what I'd look for is more you guys, I, I don't know that there's a lot that we as staff have to tell you about that. If you have specific proposals for how you would like process to change, I think that's something we can schedule in the future, but I, in the absence of some kind of specific direction from you guys about what you want changed, I, I don't know, um, we can't alter the code and the code is what it is.
So no, my thought, and I'll, I'll put it in writing, my thought is, one, what can this council learn from what happened? It, it's not a backtracking. And since we're kind of charged with doing RFPs in the future based on one twenty-three grants for proposals, that seems to segue into it, say, hey, as we start building this, what have we learned and what can we put in and afford to make it a positive experience? That's all. So I'll, I'll put something in writing and route it to you and, and uh.
Yeah, and I think that, I think what I'd like to do is get direction from the council about what you as a group want. Um, I'm, I'm trying to, we try to be responsive as staff, but when one of you sends us a, hey, I'd like to have, you know, twelve hours of work done. Uh, I know, I know that's not your intent, but that, yeah, but that's, that's kind of what it triggered for, I think Hannah, myself in particular, when we.
That was not my intent at all.
Yeah, so I'll refresh that. And then maybe let's um, work that back through the council at the next meeting or two on what you guys really would like to do.
I'll refresh it so the hours fall on our shoulders and not yours. And I guess the last one I mentioned earlier is, I hope we can come up with. And I guess the last one I mentioned earlier is I hope we can come up with some, even though we might be hitting the same people, whether it be in the paper or, or a quarterly or something, a state of the city, not as extensive as we did necessarily with the town meetings, but we've got some ideas from, um, Manager Marshall in that we look down the road to incorporating that for touching base with the community. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I like that, that suggestion as well. Um, Counselor Gotus.
Sorry, one more. I'd like to invite everybody on council to the cast meeting. It's in Basalt. Uh, I think Ingrid Shelley, I think you guys came to the cast. Basalt.
Okay.
Uh, August twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. Uh, we had, we hosted here locally, October, we, we were hosts and I, I think.
Yeah.
And it was, I, I thought it was valuable, especially the evening session, but, um, the things like law enforcement liability, Colorado, the Deputy Director of Destination Stewardship for the Colorado Tourism Office is going to be there talking about stewardship, marketing and strategic planning, um, reception and dinner. It's not a super high expense and especially we don't have any travel expenses. So if you all want to join, uh, I would love to have as many representatives from Glenwood Springs as possible because it is a great group that talks about very timely last mile and first mile mobility and sustainable and net zero building. There we go. That's my plug. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, over strawberry days, we had that opportunity to, some of us were able to help out on a, um, beer tent shift. And, and it was fun. It was a great opportunity, I think, for us to kind of engage with the community. I would love counselor to be creative and think of other opportunities that we can engage with the community where we go to them instead of asking them to come to us. There's opportunity certainly for coffee with counsel, which I think we should all be looking forward to. And I think Brianna can help us schedule that. But if we can, you know, we can all kind of be more present and be more available. I think that's really, it's timely. I think it's opportunities like that where we can hear concerns, um, comments before they, you know, the frustrations grow. We can sometimes help the community better understand where we're at and how we got there. So if you guys can help me, I'd like to come up with opportunities like that regularly. Um, and I'm happy to, uh, attend with you. Yeah. Thanks, you guys. Um, with that, I'm going to close council comments. Okay, and we will turn them to our city manager's report. So a couple of items, um, uh, I believe three of you have signed up for the, uh, upcoming discussion in, where was the location? Sarah, we just did the. Yes, that one. Um, and it happens to fall on a council night. And I had mentioned that before that, uh, if that was something where we had had, um, an interest in doing that, that we could then talk about, did we want to cancel the, cancel a meeting and then have a special meeting? Did we, like, how did we want to handle it? So there will be three people at that.
What day was that?
October eighteen.
Thank you. I was going to say, I know it was October, but I just couldn't remember. Yes. Yes.
And can you give a reminder for those that didn't register what the organization is that just kind of a, a quick?
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
About twenty thirty.
Thank you, that one.
And it's, and it's also a cast meeting jointly. So if you missed this, it's all.
Yeah, yeah, I, I knew it was jointly with cast, but it was the, the mountain discussion. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. So, um, and it, 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 it seemed like a very good, uh, discussion, which is why I brought it up and was glad to see that several of you were wanting to attend. But then the question is, you know, because of the timing of the event, you would not be able to get back in time for a council meeting if you were staying up there.
So what you're looking for is direction. Do we want to reschedule our regularly scheduled second meeting in October?
Yes.
For another time. And I, I think we can make a motion to go ahead and reschedule it. Um, do you have a recommended date that you'd like to do?
I, I do not. I was going to see what the availability was, uh, before I just selected a, a date.
I'm not available earlier that week, um, but I would be available for like a Monday or Tuesday meeting the following week, the following week. Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, we do need to get a meeting scheduled in there because we need to do the budget hea- hearing is typically that night.
Yeah.
Second meeting in October, so.
So what if we, I'm just going to open my calendar. Yeah. What if we did? What if we did October twenty-fourth in lieu of October nineteenth? There is a water conference. I don't know. There's that water conference in Junction that day, but I think I don't see why we couldn't get back in time. I don't know how late it goes, though.
I didn't know if you wanted to keep it with the consistency of we do it on Thursday, so did we want to just move it to the twenty-sixth?
But then we have another meeting the next Thursday. Is that a concern, Carl?
Uh, I think we can probably, really the only thing we do is probably the budget hearing that night. Um, we keep it light on a special meeting. It would frankly, from my standpoint, it'd be a lot easier if we're on the twenty-sixth.
Then I'll make a motion to move our regularly scheduled October meeting on the nineteenth, move it to the twenty-sixth. Counselor Gotus.
Second.
You also have somebody who, um, you may want to clarify the public comment is over.
Yep, I was thinking about doing that. Um, but there is a motion on the table, so I'll go ahead and call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I guess. That's okay. We'll vote. That's so official. That's great.
We have a lot of fun with it.
Motion passes unanimously. Make that notation that it will be canceled on the nineteenth and have a special meeting on the twenty-sixth.
Yep, perfect. Thank you. Um, I will, um, just let Mr. Richard Todd know that we have closed the public comment. That was at the very beginning of the meeting. Um, so while we always so appreciate public comment this evening, it is closed. Um, so come back at one of our regularly scheduled meetings or you're welcome to reach out to one of us independently as a council member.
And then I had one other item, which is that, um, I had sent out, um, that I would be going to the Coca-Cola plant on a tour and, um, asked if anyone else was interested. Uh, Mayor Russo, uh, is going to be joining me. It's for Monday morning at ten AM. And so I just wanted to mention it again, should someone else also want to go. I think we would need to keep it to just one more person because that way we avoid any conflict. Or we can just notice it. I just didn't know if Coca-Cola would allow for a public traipsing through their plant. So if one other council member wanted to attend, then, uh, that we could still do that.
And that is the Swire Coke plant that's on.
On Deveraux. It's Monday at ten AM. So just one, one more person so that we don't have a, a conflict, but I did want to just remind because I had sent that out. Um, and we send out lots of emails, so I just want to make sure that you hadn't missed it and I hadn't missed it. So, uh, we will be going to that. Um, I, I had met them while I was at C, uh, CML. Yeah. Um, and I had mentioned that I, I had not had a chance to be there. And so they opened up this opportunity to, to do that. Um, I also wanted to again, uh, let you know that I will be talking to the, uh, County Commission on Monday about the potential, the Vogelar Park project. Um, hopefully trying to get the county commissioners to authorize a letter of support for the grant. And then on Thursday, talking to the Rafta Board about that project, one, to encourage them to submit a letter of support, um, but also to see if they would be interested, should that project move forward uh, into potentially being a partner on that, uh, workforce housing project if it moves forward.
Great. Thank you.
I don't have to be lengthy. Thank you. No, I actually, two things that I did want to talk about, um, that we, just because of a couple of things that came up this week is, um, a press a business, we just couldn't get to it or I couldn't get to it. Um, one is, you remember that when Harper was here presenting, she talked a little bit about the Wildcat loadout. Um, I would like, um, if council is comfortable with, uh, my office drafting a letter for the mayor's signature in opposition to that, um, on outgoing correspondence, I think that would be fantastic. Uh, the other one that, um, I did want to, we're inside of the window where it's going to be before the next meeting, before we could bring this up. Um, I know some of you know that, um, the National Park Service has identified our two hot springs in town as potential national, uh, natural landmarks. Um, it doesn't come with a, a lot other, it's, it's kind of like a nice plaque kind of thing, but it is identifying them as a, as an important natural feature on a national level. They're going through that evaluation process. Uh, if it's okay, again, with, um, your consent, um, my office will draft some comments on that in support for the mayor's signature to get that out before the comment period ends in about eight days or so. Uh, if you wouldn't mind a motion to authorize both those, that'd be fantastic.
Counselor Gotus.
Uh, do you want several motions for each or can I?
Just combine.
Uh, move that we authorize our, uh, legal attorney, our legal attorney, our attorney to draft letters in opposition to the Wildcat loadout and support of national, uh, uh, designation for both hot springs.
Uh, second emotion?
All those in favor? We don't need to do it officially. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, anything else? Legal counsel. Okay, thanks all. Everybody have a great night. Oh. Oh, we, let's do a motion adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Yeah. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting? Anybody opposed? Okay, that motion passes unanimously as well.
Can I clarify?
Yeah. Just say, just say Counselor Schacter, any errands? Counselor Zlinski, a second.
Counselor Zlinski was second.